Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call an order. Today's McDowell County Board of Commissioners regular monthly session. This is February the 10th, 2025. So we are called to order and as always, we will lead off with our prayer and our pledge. And Commissioner Green will lead us in her prayer and Commissioner Ellis will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father, we come to you this evening and thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you, Lord, for forgiveness of sin. Thank you for sending your son down the cross for us. We pray that you give us patience, grace, and wisdom tonight to make the decisions we need to make for the citizens of this county. Forgive us of everything we do wrong. Pray, Jesus, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your motion, we approve.
Amen.
Second. Discussion, addition, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your motion, we approve the agenda for tonight.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, Board, can we add a closed session for personnel, please?
Amen. Amen to the motion to include that.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. First on our appointments tonight, under item A, is the Helena update. And we have our distinguished William Keller here to give us that update. So we welcome him to the podium.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to provide the monthly update on recovery efforts related to Hurricane Helene. Today is day 139. The Emergency Operations Center has been activated for response and recovery efforts related to Helene. The current slide that you see is a breakout of the sections that are currently activated at the Emergency Operations Center, including our operations section, which is working to address critical needs of citizens that are reported into the EOC, among many of the other items that you see, including debris removal. Human services section is working closely with our volunteer organizations, the Red Cross, Baptist on Mission. And if I start naming them, I'm gonna leave out a number of the organizations that are working with our human services. They're doing a great job assisting these folks who still have critical needs. Our public information section is activated, continuing to push out updates on recovery operations and programs that are available to our citizens. Finance section, which has got a tremendous amount of workload right now, ensuring that we are filing for reimbursement for all costs associated with Helene to FEMA. And then our situation unit that is monitoring the updates and the progress that we are making. I'm happy to report, this will be the last time that you see roads on our situation update, other than NC-80, which is going through a prolonged repair. US-221 North, that temporary bridge, opened this afternoon. So our major thoroughfares are now open with two temporary bridges, one on US-221 North at Mountain Paradise Campground, and then at US-70 West at Curtis Creek. That one at Curtis Creek, and even 221 North, has significant impacts to emergency services. Our Olford EMS station is now able to service the Greenlee section, Curtis Creek area, out of Olford EMS Station 2. And just getting traffic back through the town of Olford, especially for the businesses, is major progress. We're still working with Lake Tahoma on debris removal, trying to get that project rolling with US Army Corps of Engineers. And then Lake James Duke Energy announced within the last week that one of the hydro machines at Lake James is now online and able to move water through the system. Lake James is below full pond this morning. It was little over 98 feet on the reading. 100 is full pond. We had not, or we've not seen it under 100 since Helene came through. So having one unit out of three able to generate water and push it downstream is a big deal. They are actively moving water today in anticipation of three to four inches of rainfall that is expected through Friday with an additional system on Saturday. So that's one of two things that EOC is watching closely, including the winter weather advisory that is out for tomorrow, and then the heavy rainfall event that is expected. Call your attention, you've got flyers that we distributed to you, as well as for the public that's back at the sign-in table. Tomorrow evening, we begin the first of three Hope After Helene community information events. Tomorrow's event is at North Cove Elementary School from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We've got various agencies that will be attending, including the Health Department, tax assessing, building inspection, soil and water cooperative extension, DSS, North Carolina Emergency Management, FEMA, and then a number of community groups and volunteer organizations that have committed to attending this event. This is open to all of our citizens. We will be, our next event will be Saturday morning at Emergency Services Headquarters, 8:30 to 12:00. And then next, following Tuesday, at the Bud Hogan Community Center at Olford. And that, again, is our commitment to trying to meet the folks where they're at in the community and continuing to push information forward. Community comfort stations are still in operation. We've communicated to North Carolina Emergency Management that these stations need to continue due to the amount of usage they are receiving. For our IT folks in the room, they've lost, we've lost the PowerPoint on the screens. There we go. They're still operating at 135 Water Street in Olford, and then at 5878 US-221 North at New Horizon. The one at New Horizon was vandalized within the last 10 days. That station has opened back up, but just some of the things that we're continuing to deal with in recovery. Our PowerPoint is gone again. FEMA Disaster Recovery Center still is in operation at the lower level of the Senior Center. It is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
What kind of traffic were you, or they had, as far as number of people utilizing that service?
I figured you'd ask that question. I got two slides. I've got your, your traffic count.
Well, we do appreciate the feedbacks for being very proactive.
We still do not have it up. I'm gonna continue on. Do the temporary housing update. Our TSA hotel vouchers, currently today, there's 64 individuals in hotels provided by FEMA. That is down from 74 on Friday. Direct housing need per FEMA applications currently stands at six. And these are individuals who are needing the direct housing, temporary trailer, or a direct lease. This is something we continue to work with FEMA on. We, since the last update, had a number of meetings with FEMA over direct housing and temporary housing. The state has a program, FEMA has a program. But our message to FEMA was, you need to move faster. You need to move and be more deliberate in getting inspections of properties, turns. You've got to turn these faster. You've got to process these applications faster. And the 60 to 90-day turnaround period was just simply too long, and some people were even over that. They have been moving faster since those meetings, and that's something we'll continue to, to monitor and track. Here's your disaster recovery center usage. McDowell has the, is the fifth busiest disaster recovery center. Henderson, Yancey, Buncombe, there's two in Buncombe, have higher accounts than McDowell. But this is something we'll continue to advocate, that the disaster recovery center needs to remain open as long as people are eligible to file for individual assistance. What we are seeing now is the number of appeal letters that FEMA, or denial letters that FEMA is sending out, requiring citizens to appeal. And I would encourage folks, if you get a denial letter, you need to appeal it. Normally, there is something in that letter that they're saying they have not received. Maybe they have and maybe they haven't. But I like these centers open so you can go and talk to someone face-to-face, not going through the 1-800 number or the app. You can take your documents in, they can scan them and upload them, and talk to a real person face-to-face. On the debris front, here's the current numbers as of today. 54,509 cubic yards of debris have been removed. Since the last update, and when I was here, that is an increase of 9,400 cubic yards of debris. 36,275 tons of silt have been removed, and that's an increase of roughly 8,500 tons of river silt. Here's a picture of, we've got number, a number of snapshots, but this kinda gives you an idea. This is at the Black Bear Boat Landing. This debris come out of Lake James and from various locations. You can see the before and after. There's still a number of piles in the lower level that we're working with a contractor to pick up. There's still a substantial amount of debris across our roadways and on private property. So currently still picking up debris on state roads, right-of-ways. We are moving towards private roads and developments. Personal property debris removal, and this is the biggest thing that our citizens need to know, if folks have family, friends, someone that they can reach out to that still has storm debris down on their property, they can-
Meaning trees.
Meaning trees. Or other, that may have had a building that, or an outbuilding that was destroyed and needs to be picked up. If it is not within 10 feet of the state right-ofway or the private road right-ofway, then you have to file an application for personal property debris removal. You may hear that referred to as PPDR. That application can be found online on the county's website. If you go to McDowellgov.com/Helene, it will direct you to where people can apply. These applications are collected at the county level. We turn them into FEMA, and if approved, they will provide or pay for a contractor to remove that debris off your property. And that's something that citizens can take advantage of.
That means going out there and chainsaws, cutting it up?
That's correct. And that's a big deal, especially for our folks that can't financially afford to have the debris removed, or elderly folks that physically can't do it. Waterway debris removal started last Thursday in McDowell County. It is the first location for the US Army Corps of Engineers is Newberry Creek and Curtis Creek. It will expand across all waterways. The EOC team submitted over 700 points for waterway debris removal, and a lot of those points are long stretches of waterways. We had a list of points that came back as ineligible. FEMA determined that they weren't. And I'm happy to report, our team sifted through those, appealed those, and the majority of those did get approved in the appeal process. And that's something that we continue to work to add more waterway points. But you're gonna see a very rapid spin-up by the US Army Corps of Engineers on waterway. As I told a couple Commissioners, the last couple weeks, we've seen more movement at the federal level, of moving with a sense of urgency that we haven't seen since this disaster hit.
Do we know what their rationale was for the denials?
Yeah, so they look at whether critical infrastructure was at risk. A lot of times what happened is, the US Army Corps of Engineers may not have had captured the at-risk structure in the picture that was submitted, and it was us sitting with the team, having the local knowledge and saying, here's what's at risk. And I was pleased with how that appeal process went. It was very favorable for our citizens. Here's the debris tentative timeline. March 1st, right-ofway first passed, 100% complete. We're near 100% complete. First pass, and there's gonna be multiple passes is the key word here, on state right-of-ways. April 1st, right-ofway final pass, complete. May 1st, all visible and hazardous waterway debris, 100% complete. June 1st, waterway missions are complete. June 30th, PPDR, or public property debris removal, is complete, and then commercial property, June 30th. And I don't see personal property on there. I'm gonna have to check on that timeline. Moving on to hazard mitigation projects, as a reminder, for those in the room that might not be familiar with hazard mitigation, there are three different lanes for hazard mitigation. Number one is acquisition. If someone has had flood damage, or their property was flooded, meaning the structure was damaged or is currently inhabitable. And there's no other option. This is kind of the last resort. Folks can apply for acquisition, meaning it's a voluntary buyout. That is, application is submitted at the county level. We turn that into state emergency management, who packages it and forwards it on to FEMA. We have currently 29 parcels that have applied for acquisition. This can be a lengthy process if the structure is older than 45 years of age and is subject to environmental review, which prolongs it further. But this is kind of the last option for a number of folks who may be paying for mortgages of houses that are no longer there, or have had repetitive or repeated damage to their property. The second lane is elevation. So citizens who have had damage, flood damage, and they want to elevate their property, there is a grant program through hazard mitigation that if approved, will pay 100% to elevate the structure. And then the third lane is landslide mitigation. And this is the one that we continue to work on. There's not a very clear application process at this point from the state on landslide mitigation. It's been the last of the programs to be released, but something that Deputy Director Jones, who is leading hazard mitigation locally, is working on. And as I said, we have 29 parcels that have applied for buyout. 16 have applied for elevation, and eight have applied for landslide.
Do we know the dollar amount of the 29 acquisition properties, value there is?
Do you know if that's, we're in the process of, I've asked the team to carry over tax card value, so we have that. I don't know that it's updated in the spreadsheet, but I'll check on that and get back to you.
It's not, part of the issue, Mr. Walker, is that our tax staff have gone out and tried to update tax records for the upcoming billing year. And so what their, his staff are seeing online has that, that new value. So they're trying to get back in the system and get the old value, but it's a, it's a process.
I do not have a slide on it, but I want to update on private roads and bridges real quick. I have a meeting scheduled with Office of State Budget Management this week over private roads and bridges, determine where they're at in this process. The last update we received from the state is the appropriation funding had not went, come to OSBM for them to actually stand the program up. So the applications have not been released at the state level. There's another push at the federal level to get funding for private roads and bridges. But housing and private roads and bridges remain two of the biggest obstacles in recovery, and some of the biggest challenges that remain, not just in McDowell, but across McDowell County.
Folks that have already taken upon themselves to do the needed repairs to their properties as far as their roads and bridges-
Yes, sir.
Can they go back, as long as they hold on to their documents, can they go back and apply for that help?
So there's two things on that to answer your question. Number one, anyone with damage to private roads, bridges, and culverts should be applying for FEMA, IA, or individual assistance. That is the first stop in getting assistance, and some have received that. Second answer is, if the OSBM program at the state level is stood up like they did with Hurricane Fred, or Tropical Storm Fred in '21, the answer would be yes. But until we see the program design and the rules, I can't answer that question fully. But what we do instruct folks to do is take pictures prior to the repair, during the repair, and afterwards, and keep detailed receipts. VOAD, or Volunteer Organizations Assistance in Disaster Update. Jerry Lewis is our EOC coordinator. Victoria Gerink has been hired by Grace and has done an amazing job managing all of the intakes that have come through. This team meets, or group meets each week at the EOC. There are 25-plus groups have been involved with housing response in McDowell. They had four new groups at last week's meeting. And it's just tremendous to see all these folks from different backgrounds come to the room with the same goal, and that's to help our citizens. There's been 640 requests for housing repairs. 442 have been completed or had their issues resolved. 111 are pending, and, I'm sorry, 111 are pending with projects adopted. 13 are pending and still need adoption. And we still have 74 that we're unable to make contact with. Also provided tonight, boots on the ground out of the operations center. We're sending folks out, trying to make contact with 74, not just relying on a phone call because we realize some people aren't gonna answer the phone, or some people may still not have phone service. They're leaving those door hangers at the last known address of where these people have been staying, or the damaged property, giving them instructions on who to call. We're literally doing everything possible trying to make contact with these folks. So what does this look like in the next 30 days for our team continuing to addressing critical needs of our citizens? The Helene hotline continues to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Debris operations continue to push those forward on right-ofway, personal property, and across our waterways. Housing repairs, working in conjunction with the many volunteer organizations. Continue submitting hazard mitigation and working with our citizens to try to speed this process up. FEMA reimbursement will continue to be a major focus of our EOC team, as well as building and parks repair. We're starting to see those site visits scheduled to ensure that the repair of county property is done in accordance with federal laws and regulations as it relates to FEMA. And then, of course, continuing to implement our long-term recovery strategies. There's a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of positive signs of recovery from our business community, our transportation, infrastructure, seeing residents move back in to their homes that have been repaired. Don't get me wrong, there's a tremendous amount of work left to do, but I want folks to know, there is hope. And we're seeing it every week, that we're, along with this community and all the organizations that have come together to work recovery, we're moving the needle forward. And we'll continue to do that as we move forward. Here's a couple snapshots. It was a furniture company donated a tractor-trailer load of furniture for citizens who lost everything in Helene. Cleaning supplies continue to pour in, and our team making sure we're distributing those out to the folks in need in the community. And with that, I'll take any questions. I will say, while I give this report monthly, and sometimes multiple times a month, it is the folks that you are not seeing working day in and day out behind the scenes that are making this stuff happen. And their work continues to just humble me in their dedication to this county, and working as a team for one common purpose. And it's an honor for me to work alongside them, so.
Does each county have a debris removal place to, like the place in Olford beside of Aria that's grinding up the debris?
Was your question, does each county have a-
Does each county, I mean, do we have other counties bringing stuff in?
No.
Okay.
No, that is our, that is just McDowell County debris that is being picked up by the US Army Corps of Contractors.
Yep. And is that being sold? Is that mulch being sold to businesses, or, I know it's getting cut up and shipped out. I don't know.
I can't speak to whether it's being sold. I can follow up on that question, but I do know-
Just questioning only.
They grind and ship it out. The silt has to be shipped to a certified landfill in Tennessee. And then the C and D, or the construction demolition debris, is also shipped out. And one of their focuses is trying to keep that out of local landfills so that it doesn't decrease the lifespan of landfills in western North Carolina.
Has there, has there been any look at the area up around Burnett's Landing, where the river comes in, and talk of possible dredging?
I'm glad you brought that up. So the first round of waterway debris looks at hazardous debris, which is vegetative, construction demolition, any type of debris that is in the waterway. They do not look at dredging from the FEMA USA standpoint in Phase 1. I think Phase 2, when we start getting into the EWP, or the Emergency Watership Protection Program, is where re-channeling and some of those stabilization efforts come into play. But I can confidently say dredging is not in Phase 1.
Can you talk about, a little bit about what we talked about as far as phone lines and additional lines that are still hanging throughout the county?
Yeah, when we, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We continue to work with utility companies to make sure they are backtracking and getting up all of the downed lines. Certainly, it's gonna be an issue when folks start mowing grass, and having, and even the state mowers on these secondary roads, especially with all this down fiber and cable and power lines. There's a substantial amount of line still down, but there's also a substantial amount of work still left to be done, where there's a lot of temporary lines in locations that have to have construction crews come back and actually pin those lines back up. I know we were talking about a temporary line, cable line that's on the ground. So there's a lot of those locations that are out there, but it is something that's on our radar.
What about from, from the railroad? What have we heard from them?
I have not received an update from the railroad or the Parkway. That, the Parkway was a question that I got last week, but we will definitely follow up on that. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda tonight is, I'd be the board elections item, and we have Ms. Kim Welborn here tonight. And as well, we have Chairwoman Susan Elliott with us tonight. We welcome her for the Democrat Party. We also have Chairman for the Republican Party, Chad Epler. So we welcome them as well, and we're really excited to have both of those here tonight. Just, I was just sitting here thinking a little ago, and just a tidbit of history. The only thing that I liked better than history, US history when I was in school was PE, of course. And so, but I was thinking about the, the history of the two parties, you know, and when that come about. And some of y'all probably know this, and may know more about it than I, than I remember. But I think it originated back in Thomas Jefferson's day. If that, does that sound correct to you guys? That when he, during his reign as president, and of course, John Adams in that area. But there was only two parties at that time. There was the Democrat Republican Party, and there was the Federalist Party. Am I correct in saying that? I'm getting some ideas. So, but we're happy, you know, that, that did change later on in the early 1800s, I think. But anyway, we're happy to have the two parties that are representing our nation today prevalently. And so we welcome both parties here tonight, and we know that they both want to say a word tonight on behalf of the men that we are honoring and recognizing tonight. So I'll let Kim go ahead and take the podium, and we'll go from there, or Dean, whoever. But I would like to give these-
Mr. Speaker. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, County Commissioners, for letting us recognize two citizens of our county. The chairman will present two plaques in a few minutes, but I'd like to introduce our board, if you could take a moment. We have Secretary Hack Hackadere, and behind him is Tom Klein, and Nella Watson, here beside her. Can he ever come in, or is she not available? Okay. And I'll go ahead and introduce our board. Kim Williams, Jane, she's a director. Jane is deputy director. Newlywed, works in our office.
Bailey.
Bailey. And what's her last name now?
Davis.
Davis. Okay. It changes on you. We have two people, officials that have worked in our precinct. It's hard to get people to work as much as they have to work in 12-hour shifts. But we have two people that have stood the task and been with us for years. And those people are Joe Quinn. Is Joe here?
Yes.
Joe, you here?
Yes.
Okay. And he's a precinct official for North Cove. Been, been there, doing this for 25 years. And he's a precinct official for North Cove, been, been there doing this for 25 years. And David Morgan, David, are you here? Okay, David, thank you for coming. He worked as a precinct official in the Glenwood Element Community for 46 years. Now that's, that's been on task, and we appreciate that. If you would, Chairman, present those two plaques from the, from the Board of, from the board.
Okay, we'd be happy to. If it please you and your board, I'd like to give the Susan and Chad a chance to say a word.
Okay.
Let's let them say a word, and then we'll present the plaques.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, would you like to come to podium and say a word?
I'm so thankful to be here tonight. Thank you for letting me speak to you briefly. And the job of an election official is thankless. It is a long, long day, and thank you so much to Mr. Quinn and Mr. Morgan for all these years of service. That is a big give back to the community. I don't think they're either one in it for the big bucks. My, my remarks tonight are on a little different subject. I wanted to thank the commissioners, the county manager, and the support staff for letting me speak this evening. On behalf of the McDowell County Democratic Party and our unaffiliated friends, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the integrity and professionalism of our McDowell County Board of Elections Director, Deputy Director, employees, board members, especially during the challenging lead-up to election 2024. Despite the adjustments required due to Hurricane Helene, McDowell County, and the state of North Carolina, our election teamwork tirelessly and efficiently. Their dedication to upholding election law, maintaining non-partisanship, and accommodating political party liaisons, nonpartisan groups, domestic and foreign press was exemplary. I'd also like to highlight the extraordinary efforts of our paid election workers, of whom Mr. Quinn and Mr. Morgan are longtime workers. They served long hours both during early voting and on Election Day. These election heroes are key to our democracy, and we deeply appreciate their service. The McDowell County Democrats and our unaffiliated friends would also like to respectfully advocate for continuity in the Board of Elections staff. We believe this will ensure future elections are conducted with the same impartiality, respect, and security that have been hallmarks of past elections. Maintaining experienced and dedicated staff is key to upholding the trust and confidence of all voters in McDowell County. I appreciate your consideration. Can I answer any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Okay, we, Chad Epler up.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the two precinct workers that are being honored this evening, but also take an extraordinary step and say that every precinct worker in this county that's ever served has really went above and beyond. It's a long day. It's typically a long time period whenever you do it. And leading up to the 2024 election, our entire goal was to make sure that voter access was protected. And that was, that was the hallmark of our message. We never wanted to touch or mess with any election equipment, or any person, or anything. We wanted to maintain the integrity of the election. That's the reason why our party has someone, Barbara Hilty, who does election integrity on a daily basis, checking to make sure that people who have been, who have died have been removed, which our local elections staff does an exemplary job of taking care of that. They are very well-trained, very well-versed in the elections. We never questioned what they were doing or how they were doing it. We just wanted to make sure and assure that voter access was always maintained and done. And we appreciate the legislature taking the, taking the opportunity to assure that the voting site that's been used numerous elections prior and anticipated to be used in future elections, if it was necessary then and necessary in the future, it was necessary now. And we appreciate them taking that chance of making sure that the election, the early voting sites in Henderson, McDowell, and Buncombe County were properly opened and access was given to those voters. That precinct opened, and it operated very efficiently and professionally, and we knew the staff was going to make sure that that occurred. And we are very supportive of the director and her staff and what they've done. We appreciate the election board members that are currently serving our county, and we look forward to a bright and successful future when it comes to elections. Our sole purpose in everything we did during the election prior to, and our message was access to the vote. And if one voter was given access because of our actions, then it was successful. And that's what's important is both, both sides, it's not a political thing whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, it's that you're a citizen and you have access to voting. And we are gracious to the staff for what they did. We're gracious for the county for stepping up and really helping make sure that occurred. I spoke to each county commissioner prior to that, and every one of you supported that, and every one of you wanted to see that occur, and you were very, you were very supportive of that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the manager and the staff of making sure that that occurred. And we appreciate you, and most importantly, appreciate those precinct workers and that staff that works every day, because it is our right as a citizen to be able to vote. And I'm glad to see that McDowell County is a place where voters are appreciated and given that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Kim, did you or Dean have anyone else you wanted to speak? Okay, I'd like to ask if they will, my dear friend Joe Quinn and David Morgan, if they will come, come up to the front, to the podium? Both of them? Joe, would somebody, Joe Quinn, you come as well up the front? I'm going to read these, I'm going to read these plaques, and then we're going to come down and present them to you. This one goes to, presented to Joe Quinn. It says, "By the McDowell County Board of Elections and McDowell County Board of Commissioners for 25 years of dedicated integrity and service to the election process, serving the voters of McDowell County, 1999 to 2024." And this one goes to David Morgan. It says, "Presented to David Morgan by the McDowell County Board of Elections and McDowell County Board of Commissioners for 46 years of dedication, integrity, and service to the election process, serving the voters of McDowell County, 1978 through 2024." You guys just stay right there, and we'll go down. We want the rest of the board and members to come up, and Chad and Susan, all you guys come up and join us, and we'll have a picture taken. Joe, you're good, just, you're down there. Bro, Joe?
You can pull that down.
You can pull it down. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay. Nice play, you're nice play.
Yes, you can, you both can say something.
These gals back here. They're up here and howling. Anyway, these gals here, you get the bar on five o'clock on election morning, the yellow buck stuff, and everything is in place tomorrow, ready to go. You start, you got pens, you got pencil, and all you got to do is you just follow up the yellow brick road. Everything goes well.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say too, you talk about election integrity, and that was mentioned earlier, and I do appreciate our elections board. We've never had issues with elections that have been falsified or not done properly. So I just, here again, echo the comments by both parties that, thank you so much to the director and deputy director and staff.
We're going to talk about the budgetary impact of the rent of $300, $3,600. I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve that lease extension.
Okay, we, we have a vote in a second, a motion in a second to extend that lease with the increase of $3,600 for rent, rent of the building where the Board of Elections is. And so we got a motion in a second, any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I do say that we get comments all the time as elected officials about the location and the levelness of that spot where people with disabilities can walk right in, or they come out, and so it's a really good location.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. You opposed? All right. That has been granted. Moving along now to the ITC under appointments, where we go to the Register of Deeds updates, and we have, Ms. Lydia, is she here? There she is. I know, she's a lot prettier than her husband, so.
He didn't hear.
Did you hear that, Lydia? I don't think Chad heard it, but I'll repeat it, she's a lot prettier than Chad.
Listen, I'm on my next side, and I don't know my change.
I want to first thank my heavenly Father and the citizens for allowing me the honor to serve as the 19th elected registrar. I'm so proud of the staff and what we do every day to preserve and protect our county's records. The nature of our office is far from indifferent, as safekeeping of McDowell County's real estate and vital records requires dependability, attention to detail, and adaptability. Tonight, I have the honor of sharing our annual update and some very interesting history with you. I'm joined by Assistant Registrar Glenn Byrd, Deputy Registrar Maggie F. Frye, and Deputy Registrar Sarah Gardner to present this update.
And here is our operations overview. The Register of Deeds in North Carolina is responsible for maintaining and recording public records, including real estate records, vital records, marriage license. They also administer oaths to the notary public. Our responsibilities, including real estate records, we record, index, maintain deeds, mortgages, leases, agreements, and other real estate documents. Vital records, we record, we index, we maintain birth, death, and marriage records. Military records, we record the military discharge records and the DD 214. Marriage license, we issue the marriage license. With plat maps, we preserve and index plat maps. Certified copies are prepared and delivered for certified records are required. Notary acknowledgements certificates provide, we provide the notary acknowledgement certificates for citizens that need these.
Register deeds revenue. The average revenue increase from the baseline year 2013 to 2014 compared to the last actual physical year 2023 through 2024 is a 51.3% increase in 10 years. 2013 through 2014 revenue was 3, 377,000, 354,55. 2023, 2024 revenue was 773,726.10. The total transactions over a 10-year lookback shows a 20.3% increase in workload. During the post-pandemic period of 2021 through 2022, the Register of Deeds saw that percentage increase as high as 24.8% in calendar year 2022. The Register of Deeds office has four full-time employees and one part-time employee, including the registrar. During the economic downturn of 2008, the Register of Deeds lost a full-time position. As the economy rebounded, a part-time position was added back. I have requested the part-time position be increased to full-time in the last three budget cycles. Hopefully, we can see movement on this, this year, as there has not been a staffing increase in more than 10 years in the Register of Deeds office. Preservation and technology upgrades since 2020. Since taking office in 2020, the office has completed the following projects. Replaced all workstation monitors, computer towers, and needed peripheral devices. Replaced the servers that had surpassed their life cycle. Upgraded security and added additional cloud-based backup during Hurricane, Hurricane Helene. The system was tested and upon restoration of internet service, the Register of Deeds office was operational. Secondary systems worked flawlessly, as service between our vendor and servers was restored. Upgraded to secure chip-reading credit card devices to protect financial transactions. Upgraded the highway map books. Upgraded the plat map storage as the old cabinets were deteriorating and the oldest maps stored in my lower sleeves were turned into liquid. Completed the first phase of restoration on the first three volumes of the county records, which we are passing around from 1842 through 1852.
Lydia, one question right there, I mean, y'all are doing a lot. One question, I got number seven. So the first phase of restoration, those documents are well-preserved. What goes into that? Just as, just general knowledge, just good to know.
We, we're about to talk about.
Oh, okay, wait, wait, keep going, keep going. Let's get heads.
So, no, absolutely. And the book that you're passing around is actually the first volume of McDowell County's records, which is a really powerful book that you're holding in your hand, and that is the first phase. Volume one, and then there's part two of volume one, and then there is volume two. And they are at the Register of Deeds office, minus the one that's in your hands tonight, and they have been preserved. The preservation of the first three volumes of county records was funded through a matching grant and the Automation Fund. The Automation Fund is collected through fees as set by North Carolina General Statute, and here are some of the highlights from the records that are included. The deed for the city of Marion's original boundary is dated in May 17 of 1843, is located in volume one, which you're looking at, on page 37, between the Carson family and the county of McDowell for 63 acres. So the foundation of the city of Marion, that record is in your hands tonight. The preservation project has revealed other records in need of professional care as the condition of volume one. condition of volume one and two were assessed and compared to earlier volumes. One example, volume six looks very similar, and you'll see photos that Sarah is going to provide for you that are comparing what volumes one, one and two look like versus volume six as of now. So this is only the beginning of that preservation project. We've located several slave deeds since the completion of the preservation project. Immediately after locating the original city of Marion boundary deed, five slave deeds follow on page 39. It is our plan to begin a review with volunteers and interns to document the most vital records contained in our records library. Hopefully, we can preserve an additional three to four volumes over the next year.
As a, here are the before and after pictures. As you can see, the volumes had separated from their bounds, so they look much better. We brought with us tonight the first volume to show you the wonderful work completed to preserve our first historical documents as the county of McDowell.
I personally want to thank each of you for the wonderful work and partnership between our office and the county administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lydia. Great presentation, we enjoyed that. Okay, moving along now to item D. Under appointments, we have tax collector items, and we have Ms. Linda Onyefrey here for that. So Linda, the floor is yours.
Can I close this? Is it okay if I close?
Yes.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So I have three items tonight to talk to you about. On February 3, I presented a, provided a report, excuse me, I provided a report to the board of the total unpaid taxes for the current year of 2024. This included the county and the district taxes and the balance of, as of January 31 of 2025 was $2,332,031.23. Second item on tonight is, here is a list of unpaid property taxes as of January 31 and after they were ordered for inspection. And the third item is the cost of advertisement. We budget every year $4,700 for, for the advertisement. This year's quote was $4,649.40, which is the same as last year, which this approximately comes out to $2.60 per name. So the advertising fee that we chart, that is charged to us is collected through and put one of the property taxes, one of the real properties. So the county does not pay, we collect that when we get the taxes paid. I would like to recommend that we do the advertisement date, March 18, 2025, in the McDowell news. This would be the published date, and the last date to pay would be by March 1. A delinquent and advertising notice was sent out to the taxpayers February 1, which gives them 30 days, which is by statute, it gives them a little bit more than 30 days, but by statute, I have to allow 30 days before advertisement. And that is it.
Lydia, the question I've got is, and talked to you earlier, what did the general statute say about digitizing? Is that allowable?
I guess it has to be, the way I understand it and was reading, that under the current law, it has to be a print advertisement until once it, if it becomes law, then they can, once it becomes law, then we can have an ordinance authorizing us to do a digital.
Thank you. You basically need permission to not make this public.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the receipt of the list and the placement of the list in the McDowell.
Both personally, as we've also been trying to volunteer in our community, we've actually had many of our clients volunteering in the community and our staff in trying to join with everybody else. I've been so amazed and proud of our county and everybody that has stepped up to do some of the amazing and continuing to do the amazing work that's being done that has been reported. And so, so I just want to thank God for the county we live in and for the people that are here. So I'm going to give you just a few quick boring statistics, and I will say I'll be giving more detail of this in a written report to the county a little later in our, in our year report budgetarily. But we have three areas of focus in trying to help individuals that have faced incarceration and are trying to rebuild their lives. And that is within the community, individuals that have been incarcerated and are now back into the community. Then there's also individuals that are currently residing in the McDowell County jail. And then there are clients now through a new program that we just launched, our pilot program, last June of 2024, where we now are partnering with the Department of Adult Corrections, North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections have launched a prison pre-release program where individuals who are slated by this state to be returned to McDowell County, as well as Avery and Yancey County, but McDowell County specifically here, will be given an opportunity and invitation to come through this pre-release program before release. It's an 18-month, individuals with 18 months or less left on their sentence can come into this program, and they are provided intensive help in various curriculums and programs that range from cognitive behavioral work to trauma therapy to relational recovery to, to several things, including also spiritual development for individuals that desire to have God as a part of their. And so we're proud of that program. So beginning with the community, today we have, in 2023, 2020, or 20, excuse me, 2024, 25, we served 166 clients within the community, provided 2,990 services to those clients, provided over 44,000 miles of transportation for those clients. And the current transitional housing that we do have, and this is stage one housing, and stage one housing is what we call life stabilization housing, where literally we help people who are on the streets and homeless, who have also been formerly incarcerated, be able to come into the safety of our program housing, where we literally provide for every need. And that's basically, we're renting three houses, we can keep four people in each house, two houses are men's, one house is for women. And we serve the needs of 60 people this past year in those houses, and as well as have held over 86 classes, cognitive behavioral classes, and also anger management and domestic violence, which we are now able to provide. We also have five of our staff that I'm very proud of that are at various stages of the process of getting their certified alcohol and drug counseling licensure certification. So, so we're proud of our staff. When it comes to the jail, we were able, we, we took in 197 applications for help for individuals in the jail. And, and then of those, we've been able to provide 1,351 services to help address the needs of individuals as they're preparing to either go back to prison or come out to the community, including taking them through multiple levels of assessment, and then based upon that assessment, helping them put together a plan, because if you're going to prison, we say learn how to do it right this time. Do your time, don't let your time do you. And so we prepare them to be able to do that. If they're coming back into the community, then to bridge into our out, out of jail, out of incarceration, community-based program, where we continue for another year to provide supportive services to help them main, gain and maintain new life and never have to go back again. And, and as we all know, this is not just for the sake of the individuals that we have the privilege to serve, but also for the safety of our community. Because as I tell people all the time, would you rather have people who have been incarcerated being released back into this community with no place to go and no help? So now they just wander the streets and live in the woods with no accountability, with no program structure, with no supportive system at all? Or would you rather than be in a highly accountable program with a very strong supportive structure that helps them not only rebuild their lives, but sustain their lives in that, in that recovery? So we are very blessed to do that. In the prison system, I'm happy to say we have 20 people in our, we have, we're very limited in our, we're stepping into our program gradually, because the program right now is out of foothills. It was going to be here in Marion, but we all know Little Marion got shut down during COVID. So now it's at Little Foot, foothills, minimum security unit is where we're operating our stage one program. Eventually, we're going to go to medium custody and then eventually maximum custody. It's also our plan to extend this program into Swananoa for the women's minimum security prison as well, so that any man or woman across the state that's coming back into McDowell County have the opportunity to get intensive help and preparation before they even are released into then another year of supportive preparation. And on that note, I would like to also add that we are now writing a grant this year through DOJ, BJA grant, it'll be our third one, to help us now take, over the past few years, we've been building componentry within the capacity to do community support work as well as pre-release support work in the jail, as well as this past year, starting the, the prison program where we're now able to do the, the pre-release support in the prison. Now what we're doing is looking to hire some more staff that gives us the ability to do what we call a complete continuum of care. So in McDowell County, the day a person, the first day a person goes into jail, their recovery starts, and we start working with them. We're working with the DA's department, with the public defender's office, to, to work through the whole pre-trial process of whatever their crime or whatever their situation requires. And then depending upon what the court, what the judges decide, the outcome of that's going to be, then, like I said, we're now prepared with our pre-release program, anybody who receives two years or less, focusing on the 18th month specifically, can be transferred from the McDowell County jail right into our pre-release prison program where we'll work with them for another 18 months, and then they get released where we work with them for another year. So we will be able to work with an individual for over three years intensely in helping them begin to learn how to rebuild their lives, renew their minds, renew their hearts, and re, and gain new life skills, new life understanding and capacity. And we believe, based upon the data that we see, that we will have a minimum of a 95% success rate for individuals ever going back into jail again through this continuum of care.
What's the current statistic of somebody's release without care of re-entry back into the prison system?
Depending on which study across the state you look at, the, the average of, would be somewhere between 45 to 52%. Our current state right now with freedom of life is 12.5%. We want to get that down below 5%. And we'd like to get it down to zero, we believe our God can do anything. But we're also being humble with our statistics.
You started freedom life on about seven, eight years?
2012.
2012, so it's been, yeah, a long time. I remember.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, do you have a, a number of how many people you've helped affect through this ministry?
Pre-release, in jail and prison, we've served the needs of over 7,000 individuals.
What about that?
Post-release, in the community, over 4,000 individuals. And we are excited about the potential of where that's going to continue to go. We also, this year, are super excited, we've had a heart to do this for a long time, for at least the last three to four years. A couple of years ago, God really put it on my heart, I saw, I was doing some statistical research and saw a stat, a statistic that just caught me by surprise, but it should have made sense. A survey, or a survey, a national survey that was done, a study that was done by Cornell University, found that 70% of high school dropouts are connected to a family member who's been incarcerated. Whether immediate or extended. And so God birthed in my heart then a desire to eventually be able to start a continuum, I mentioned a continuum of care for individuals that have already gone into the system, to try to help them be able to come out and never have to go back. But this year, we've already written one capacity grant, we're, we're writing some other capacity grants to give us organizationally the capacity to open up a new office and be able to launch an entirely new division in McDowell County that's going to be a prevention division, and it's going to focus on at-risk students of families that have been incarcerated. I don't know if y'all are aware of this or not, it's not a statistic to be proud of, but it is the reality of what is in McDowell County right now. McDowell County is 13th out of the 100 counties in North Carolina when it comes to the number of kids in the foster care system because of an incarcerated family member.
Can you repeat that again, say it even more time?
McDowell County ranks 13th of the 100 counties, one being worst, for the number of, of students that are in the foster care system as a result of having a family member that's incarcerated. And I don't know if y'all are aware of it, but also within McDowell County, there's currently 150 students already in the criminal justice system in our county. That's not acceptable to us. And so we want to put every bit, as God gives us the ability, we want to put every bit as much energy into helping prevent people from entering into prison as we are helping them never go back. And so this year, y'all can pray for us, if we get the grants that we're writing, we will be launching a new division in a new office, because we do not want to be working with students in the same office where we work with adults. But we, it is our prayer that by next October, we will have the ability to be able to open a new office in this county, partnering with other great organizations. It's nothing that we feel like we're going to do alone, just like we have right now over 50 organizations that are involved in the reentry council for the adult side. We're also through Youth Forward and through a lot of other good student organizations in this county that are doing some great work, partnering with them to identify gaps with JCPC and other organizations, and then to start filling in those gaps and putting together a very intensive mentorship program and, and evidence-based curriculum programs to begin to identify students at risk and be able to provide, just like we do for the adults, every bit of supportive services that God possibly gives us the money to provide to make sure that those students never have to see the inside of a jail or a prison. And if they already are in the system, to be able to provide deflection or diversion opportunities for them never have to go there, because we all know, you take a kid that's struggling, you put them in an environment of other kids that are struggling, and pretty soon, they're going to learn how to struggle more together.
Danny, I, I want to applaud you for what you have already done in the county, but what you are about to do also. My 19-year career in law enforcement, I always kept in mind that you may have a young man or a woman that gets in trouble for the first time. Maybe it's a felony. And because the lack of support and opportunity for those individuals, they were forced back into the same life that, where they messed up. So I support what you're doing. I applaud it, because I, I know, I've got a, I've got a family member, a young man, that got in trouble one time, and if it had not been for the support system that he had, everything that he did would say felony, felony, felony. It would follow him the rest of his life. But right now, he is, he is about to retire from a 20-year career that's going to take care of him the rest of his life. But it was because of the support system that he had, and we, we have to do that as a society, so I say thank you.
Well, and thank you. I'm, I'm blessed that y'all have that heart, because it takes a community, it takes everybody. One organization is not going to be able to have the impact that entire community can have together. And so it really does. You know, we praise God that he's given us a capacity as an organization to be able to bring, hopefully, millions of dollars of new grant funding over the next five years into this county around just these needs, because it's going to take every bit of resourcing that God makes available to us and that, and money as well as in individuals willing to volunteer and mentor. But I believe that we can change, because we're working for two generations from now. I'm not going to be here to see what I hope is going to be such a, a tremendous impact. We're going for the long term, which means there's a lot of short-term stuff that we'd like to get to quick, but we need to make it in the pace that it needs to be to win the race in the long run, not just to be here for a few years and gone. And to do that, there's And to do that, there's a whole lot of organizational development. There's a whole lot that goes on. As everybody knows, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. Same thing in business and everything else. You've got to plan and build your foundation equivalent to your mission to be able to be sustainable in what you're trying to do. And so we are very blessed to be a part of a county and county leadership that understands what it's going to take.
It's one thing to, you know, for law enforcement to pull criminals off the street, but it's an entirely different thing whenever you've got a group of people like you represent that are willing to step in and try to help those people to teach them, lead them down the right path through the mercy of God and learn them to follow a different trail, a different track, a different path, and hopefully never get back into those same situations again that they were in to start with. Yeah, I agree with you, man. It's a wonderful thing you're doing.
Danny, you said 7,000 people went through your care, your programs?
We've been able to touch the lives of people.
And that's 95% of those people that will not reenter the jail or prison system?
Well, no, no, no. I said, our prison pre-release program, we have 20 people in and we're building it. We just started that. But we touched the lives since we started in 2012 within jail and prison. We've been able to speak into, touch in some way over 7,000 people who were in current incarceration, whether it was as a chaplain that I've served in Marion Correctional or within also the jail over that period of time.
Well, you're just making just a tremendous impact. And if you're doing 95% of what you just said...
Of the 20%.
Yeah, the 20%.
Of the 20.
The 20 people.
Yeah.
You're still going to carry over with great success in all your other programs.
Yes, trying to. Which leads me to the final thing that we all are partnered in, in the room, and that is the housing project over on 70. After two years of blood, sweat, and prayer with the federal environmental process, we are now looking to break ground in March for the apartment complex and that will be providing 44 program, long-term transition housing, reentry program houses for people who have faced incarceration within McDowell County. And these are program houses. These are not halfway houses. I had mentioned what Stage One is. Stage One is life stabilization. What Stage Two is, is once we get people stabilized within three to four months and get them jobs, get them all of the legal paperwork and get their lives all situated, now they're ready to start needing some time to really pull everything together and build some new continuity and consistency in their lives. And has anybody seen the rent of Pete things lately?
Real.
And can you imagine on a barely life-sustainable wage salary paying the kind of rent that it costs, especially after Helene, when we know the number of available houses have gone down precipitously? So thank God for this apartment complex because it's our plan that then we'll move people out of Stage One into Stage Two where they'll have another year to gain life stability, life accountability. And this is program housing. It's going to be incentive-based housing. There are going to be case managers that are working with everybody in there. It's going to be income-based rent, based on whatever income they have. And so they've got to have a job. They've got to keep a job. And we're going to teach them how to keep a job. We're going to teach them how to manage the money. They're going to continue to go through classes and life development goals. Every three months, if they keep those goals, they get to stay in the housing another three months for up to a year. And the goal is by the end of that year, that they have gained the capacity of personal, financial, and other life management skills that then we're going to help them, we hope, buy a house. Because saving money is going to be part of what we're going to try to help them do, rebuild their credit is what we're trying to help them do. So they don't have to come out and pay $2,000 a month rent for a small little family house. Hopefully, they can buy one and pay less a month.
You will have staff on site?
Yes.
24/7?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, as well as programmers that will be maintaining accountability. We'll be doing random drug testing. We'll also be doing random housing inspections because part of what we want to be able to teach the clients to do is how do you maintain a home? I mean, we're dealing with people who've spent their whole lives, a lot of them, not even knowing what a home is, let alone how to maintain one. So we're trying to help people literally do everything that we can to learn how to live a life that for a lot of our clients, they don't even... They've never been taught. They weren't parented in such ways as to be able to do that. Now, that's not everybody, but that is the majority of the people that we work with. They don't know how to keep a check and account. A lot of them have never even worked above board. And so we're teaching people through not just our program, but those community partners that we have to help them learn skills that many of us who were blessed to have a healthy home, to have healthy parents, were able to teach us. So I'm excited about that, but we also need more. So we're going to be writing a grant to also build another Phase One or Stage One Transition House in McDowell County. The neighbor to the property that we own, the nine acres we own, owns five acres and has already approached me about selling us that acreage to be able to build a Stage One house, which would be a 20-bed facility. It's not an apartment like the Stage Two houses where people live on their own. It's going to be community housing because it's Stage One life stabilization. But it will give us more beds because we constantly have a waiting list. We still have to help people in the woods and on the streets because our houses are always full. And even with McDowell Mission and other organizations that are trying to help with this as well, there's not enough beds. And so we're trying to write the grants and build the capacity to create more beds, to help more people be able to get off the streets and into our program housing that can move on through the other stages and hopefully never have to be on the streets or back in prison again.
In order to do a project like that and to maintain the housing, I'm sure there's state and federal regulations that you have to meet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Lots of...
Yeah.
You want a list?
No.
Just ask Ashley.
I've seen some of their lists.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the low bidding grading. That's by Odom. Is that correct?
So Odom is the engineer. The two bids, we had the bid opening on Thursday after the packet was done.
I make my motion to approve the low bid when it opened on Thursday.
So they... I'm sorry, they were opened this past Thursday. So I have them... They were approved after the packet was sent out. So I can read those aloud. GEM, two local companies. We did have a first bid opening for the 30th scheduled. Didn't have enough bids, re-advertised for the next week. We had two local bidders. GM Constructors, $114,771.80 is the low bidder. And then Fowler &amp; Sons Enterprises, $124,488.16. The recommendation is to go with GEM.
Make the motion. We go with GEM.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick note, the Community Development Block grant is paying for the grading as well as the subsequent work.
Okay. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And I would put this in. We have launched a regional reentry council for this entire region, for McDowell, Madison, Avery, and Yancey Counties. And we'll be having a reentry council, a regional meeting on February 20th, next Thursday, not this Thursday, 9 to 11:00 in the morning at Mayland Community College in Spruce Pine. We'll have several people from the North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections there. And the advantage of being regional now is we can write much larger grants to be able to gain more leverage for our entire region because a lot of the people we work with have family in all of these counties, and they go back and forth in probation departments between these counties or talking to each other. So it makes sense that now we have offices in each of these counties to be able to be part of the regional cycle of what's going on so that we can work on a holistic way as well as an individual county way to be able to gain the most leverage and the most capacity to have the most impact upon families in McDowell County and also connected in our region. So I really appreciate y'all and all of the support that you give to what Freedom Life does, but also what so many organizations in our county do. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny, and we appreciate it. God gave you that information.
Yes, yes. And I cannot get away from it. I don't want to.
Okay. Moving along now to old business. Item A under old business, first of all, is the transfer station repair bids. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. We've talked about this project probably five times over the past three or four years, and it might be like an advisory that we received probably at the beginning. We received notice from NCDQ that our facility needed work, and then we talked about hiring an engineer, and then we talked about permitting. So it's been very sporadic and not every month, of course, during that time. But we did receive information from DQ probably about three and a half years ago now after a typical inspection of our facility. It is a permitted facility by the state that it was substandard and needed a substantial amount of work for it to be... To stay permitted. And so we, since that time, we have worked with our engineer, Labella, on various options to repair the facility, all of those being very disruptive and somewhat costly. So we've worked over the past... We did have a bid opening for this project last fall, actually. I think maybe November. And since that time, we've tried to work with the low bidder being Bloom to try to value engineer the bid down. And we did a little bit, but it's maybe hard to tell. And so you have a bid recommendation from Labella, again, from our engineer. It's a very detailed recommendation, which is probably necessary due to the complexity of it. If you go down to page 37, you'll see that a great breakdown of the three bids we had from the contractors. There is one called HNA. When we opened the bids, just to be very frank, we were very pleased with their bid until we started to review their documents. There was quite a bit that was incomplete, which sometimes you can look past. But what we were not able to look past is that they had a limited contractor's license. This project is over their contractor limit, and we will not legally be able to hire them as a contractor for the project. Tag Construction, who is a local company, they were not in the low bid after HNA, and Bloom was the low bidder after HNA was disqualified. So as far as the project itself, we have the recommendation from HNA, I'm sorry, from Bloom, from Labella, that they'd be awarded. Their bid is a little over $1.9 million. Again, a lot of money, but necessary. We have about $180,000 from a small federal grant that we received about three years ago that would be able to go towards the project, leaving roughly 1.8 remaining. My recommendation is we still have about 3.8 in ARPA funds remaining that we identify the balance that it would go towards the project.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the low bid by Bloom Construction as presented by staff.
Second. We have a discussion.
And we will be using the ARPA funds.
Okay. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Let's move along to item B, which would be the water system projects. A good update on that, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Quick, on the action here, there is an action item underwater system for the Nevo side of things. We've talked about the East End project, which is at the eastern end of our water system. That is a project that has been about a year and a half under design and permitting around that area. And we do... Did open bids here last week, and I've got a recommendation in your packet to be awarded to Hyatt Pipeline. That is a little over $2.5 million as a total cost, and all of that fortunately is being paid for by a grant we applied for and received about three years ago.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Move we approve the bid as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is item C, which would be the Commissioner Committee assignments. I think each of you have these forms in your hands. And I think we have filled the vacancies tonight. I'll let... Did you need comment on that, Mr. Wood?
Other than to say, just for information, commissioners serve on various committees, either you have created that are locally focused or committees and boards that are serving as a regional basis that are created by state statute. And so there were quite a few that were vacant due to Mr. Allison going off the board. But it's an opportunity for you to make the decision for the boards you'd like to stay on or horse trade or that sort of thing.
I think it's a pleasure of the board that everyone stay on committees that they're presently on. And then adding two would be, let me just list those, the Foothills Regional Commission for Rural Planning Organization, which Ms. Gardner had requested to be on, and also the Foothills Help District Board. That... Are you still on that one?
No.
She's... Okay.
That was Chris.
And then the Regional Advisory Board, and then the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and the American 250 Committee.
I'll take that.
Okay. So that's how it will stand. All the other boards will stay as is. We need to make that a...
Please.
Make a motion. We approve the committees as presented with Commissioner Gardner picking up the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, and Commissioner Green picking up American 250.
Second. Motion second. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving along now to new business, the budget update. Mr. Wood?
Just an update. This month, no budget amendments. We have the property tax collection report in your packet as well as the sales tax for four months of collection. Do not believe we have the October receipts in there as of yet, but interested to see those once we have an impact from the storm. See how that impacts us.
Move we approve the budget items as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B would be the ordinance amendment request, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Maybe surprising to some folks, we do have a zoning ordinance in this county. We do have about three or four sections of the county that have voluntarily requested zoning for their communities. What we have realized and determined that the ordinance, it's a little bit older as it's originally written. It does not allow any exemptions for what would be called temporary housing for, especially after like a storm like Helene. We've encountered a situation or two where that otherwise could be detrimental to folks, and we've made some administrative adjustments to allow people to access their property, of course. But we'd like to, if you would be so inclined, to send the directive to the planning board that they create a temporary housing category in our zoning ordinance. And it would have timelines and to respect the community wishes of the people that requested the zoning, but allow people to utilize their property as they would so fit.
Make a motion. We go ahead and allow the planning board to present, back to this board, a motion on the temporary RV and mobile home ordinance changes.
Second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor, this say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is administrative items. Mr. Wood?
You have, it looks like, four. You have a leak request from the Nevo Water System, reimbursement resolution for parks and recreation for some two pickup trucks they're hoping to purchase, EMS write-offs for the uncollectible transport bills, and then vehicle financing for one ambulance and two Toyota Tacomas. There's a resolution authorizing financing from Truist Bank.
We've all had a chance to look at these.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve all the administrative items as presented and any resolutions that need to be signed. and any resolutions that need to be signed.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is, uh, board appoints.
Thank you. The only thing that we have is one request to reappoint a member of the Transportation Advisory Board whose terms expired, and that's Megan Webster, and Jason sent that over.
Ms. Chairman, make a motion, we approve, uh, the request by our director and reappoint her as a committee member.
Okay.
Second.
So, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is, uh, tax matters, uh, Mr. Wood.
Yes, thank you. Uh, these are your typical, um, releases, rebills. Uh, there's a few write-offs this month as well.
Move, we approve the tax matters. Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is citizen comment, uh, do we have?
Yes, sir.
Is that all? Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is Commissioner Staff reports, anything?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion with adjourned?
So, uh, close session.
Your motion, we go in closed session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Do I hear a motion, we go out of closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.